Good evening, everyone. I would like to open the New Burton Board of Education meeting for April 1st, 2024. The time is 6:02. All rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. Rivera, would you please do that?
Yes, sir. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to its republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Ms. Edward, roll call, please.
As President, Vice President, Barbara Marino.
Here.
Secretary Diana Reyes.
Here.
Anthony King with the C.
Yo.
South grass for Bala.
Right here.
Anthony King with the K.
Here.
Ms. Annie Parker.
Here.
Ms. Joan Pina.
Here.
Jose Rivera.
Here.
And Ms. Pina Sainz.
Right here.
Thank you. And a moment of meditation, please. Thank you. And I don't have any public participation signups. Is there anyone wishing to address the board? Anyone wishing to address the board? See none, we'll close public participation and move on to the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. President. Very happy to present to the board tonight. A slightly different kind of superintendent's report. So first and foremost, we'll do our more traditional report. As always, you have a beautiful addition, another beautiful addition of our award-winning District Dispatch newsletter. Many points of pride to be found within on the cover and the feature story is our student Cheyenne Ragu, who was selected by Senator Richard Blumenthal to attend the State of the Union address. Really, it's not an exaggeration to say that when Ms. Langer told us the stories of that, it was a goosebumps movement for me that we have students playing such a prominent role in our community and in this level, and in this case at the national level. Also, my somewhat new Building the Beacon article or column, if you haven't yet seen it, I also emailed the board on this. Very, very pleased by the work happening at the high school. We now rank sixth in the whole state of Connecticut for giving students opportunity to earn UConn credit. A lot of kudos and a lot of credit goes to the high school staff who are recruiting and signing students up for these courses. It's not just that we ranked sixth, it's also that we increased that number by nearly 100 students in just a single year from last year to this year. So really wonderful stuff. I'm going to get right to my report, so as always, you can see lots of really great stories in the dispatch about the wonderful things happening in our district. We're going to do something slightly different tonight. I actually have a couple of co-presenters for the superintendent's report. You've heard me talk about our district growth plan and our focus on ELA, math, and rigor in the classroom, having a very small plan on purpose. This can seem pretty theoretical or esoteric to some people. So what I thought we would do tonight is bring you a couple of examples of how that work is coming true and how improvements are already happening. So the thing behind the district growth plan is it's really just the hub of the wheel. The real work begins when each school principal takes that district growth plan and adapts it to each of their schools. So what I thought we would have tonight is some stories of success from a couple of our principals about how they're taking the district growth plan, turning it into a school growth plan, and already seeing some really nice positive changes in their metrics. So Ms. Fazio and Mr. Maisy, did you guys draw straws to see who would present first? Why don't we go in order of grade, then let's ask Ms. Fazio to come to the podium first. So we have Ms. Anita Fazio with us tonight, principal of Gaffney School, to tell us about one element of her school growth plan and how she's seeing data that proves that this part of her plan is coming true. Thank you for being here tonight.
Thank you for inviting me. Good evening, everyone. Do I need to stand here or can I move?
I think they like you on the mic for the purpose of the...
So I'm Anita Fazio, I'm the principal at Gaffney, but before I even begin to present this amazing data, it's not just me, it's a team of people. And I do have some folks with me in the audience that I do want to introduce you to. They are behind all of the work that we've been doing at Gaffney. So we have Mary Gray, who's our reading teacher. Jeff Ponticelli is a special education teacher. Leslie Libby is one of our fifth grade teachers. And then we have Elizabeth Brooks, who's a fifth grade teacher. Next to her, we have Alex Zimbowski, and... And that's all of them. That's a selection of staff that did come with me to support today's work. And like I said, it is not me, it is them. They are behind all of this greatness that I'm going to share with you today. All right, I might have to move to see this. Sorry. I'll talk really loud so you can all hear. So I was asked to present our reading growth for iReady from the Winter Diagnostic for Grade Four and Five. So there's a lot of bar graphs and stuff there, but the great part is those three bullets at the top. So as of the Winter Diagnostic, 51% of our fourth grade students met or exceeded their typical growth, which is one year, and 21% of our fourth graders exceeded their stretch growth, which is more than a year's growth. And we dropped the students in that red band, which is the two years or more below grade level, by 20%. You can go to the next slide. Here's our fifth grade data, same thing, iReady for the Winter Diagnostic for ELA. We have 55% of our fifth grade students who exceeded their typical growth, 11% exceeded their stretch, and we dropped our students in that red band again by 17%. And how did we do all this? Lots of time. If this is not something we started in August, this is years' worth of work. So this is two, three, four years' worth of work. The adult actions in our building is our students know about the data at the classroom level as well as the whole school level. Our teachers plan together. All of our classrooms have anchor charts and vocabulary walls, and you'll see exactly what that is in the next slide. Our students are all centered in instruction. There's not a lot of teacher talk going on at Gaffney, but a lot of student talk. We utilize alternative work spaces such as vertical boards, writing on desks, and we use flexible seedings to help the students stay engaged. Our teachers have a clear success criteria and an objective, which the students are aware of. The students own the rubrics that we're using in the ARC program, and they actually know how to use it, and they've been peer-scoring each other's papers. We're using MyPath with iReady with fidelity, and we do it during centers, we do it at wind time, we do it for homework, small group instruction... Sorry, we do small group for testing for both iReady and S-MAT, which is that big test coming up in nine days, nine school days, and intervention time has been consistent. So you'll see some stuff in action now. There's three very, very short videos. I'll just give you a little bit of background on what you're about to see. So these are fifth grade students, and they are creating a vocabulary wall with a very high-interest theme of Taco Bell. So if you don't know, Taco Bell has a bunch of different hot sauces that range from very mild to a Diablo sauce, which is like a fiery hot sauce. And they are using vocabulary words that they're using for a unit, and they are aligning them to the Taco Bell hot sauce meter. So a very mild word like "little" would be on the mild taco sauce, where a Diablo word, which is a synonym for "little," which would be a higher level, above-grade level word for "little," would be in the Diablo section of the hot sauce. So you're going to see in Part One, if you just click on that box, you'll see a very short video of the beginning of this lesson, and the students are defining the word and getting the synonyms.
See? Attack. Attack.
And in the second one, you're going to see the students debating on the hotness level that the word card that they have in their hand and where it should be. Okay?
Okay. So for Monday's lesson, we can change down for mild, we put "smashing." We put "fire," we put "fast blast."
Okay, so what made you guys order it and the way that you ordered it?
Um, because it's kind of difficult because the words that we add are like the same thing.
Yes.
They kind of rest.
And if you double-click on the third one, it should make it bigger so you can all see. And now you'll see them taking the vocabulary words that they just debated, and they're going to align them on their desk to turn them into a word wall. And I'll let you play it for a second. Oh, sorry, I should have been a little bit bigger.
Um, you know, if you want, we can... Yeah, it's like... This will be a mild, because it's not like you align it in the face.
And then if you go to the next slide, it'll show the finished product. And you can see on the bottom, that's the cards that the students were manipulating to find out where they went on the hotness level, if you were speaking in Taco Bell terms. And there is the word, there's a picture of the word, the definition, and the word in the sentence, and we have the picture of the words for all of our ML learners in the building. So that's an example of one of our word walls. So here's a little bit about the rubric. So in ARC, the American Reading Company program, the students are learning how to use rubrics. And this lesson, the teacher was teaching the kids how to use the rubric, and they're peer-scoring each other's paper with the rubric. And what they have done is they've turned the rubric into a color-coded system. So if they find, you know, certain pieces of the rubric, they know they have to highlight that piece of the students' writing in red or pink or orange. And if you click on, in the center on the bottom, if you click it twice, there's a little clip of a couple of the students using the rubric and peer-scoring another student's writing.
And this part of the...
Yeah. I was going to say, it tells us what happened in the past, but it's not telling us what happened in the past.
What are you doing? Nobody else?
If you're supposed to perform, you're supposed to perform, and that's how we should be and start going.
At Gaffney, a couple of years ago, we started doing what we call a data walk during a staff meeting, and our leadership team is part of that data walk. So the leadership team each has a piece of the data that we present to the staff, and myself and the assistant principal, we kind of take a step back, and they're presenting to their peers. So a data walk at Gaffney happens three times a year. We do it in that beautiful main hallway that we have where all of our data is displayed, and we talk about how we're doing well, what we're not doing so well, who we can support, and how we can support them. We also, and I had told you how the kids know the data. So the students have data posted in their classroom, and they have data as a classroom level, so their data is there, and then they have it posted in the hallway as a classroom as well. So this is just a couple examples of some of the data that we have. So we have ERLA levels, we have iReady lessons passed, and then power goals are up there as well. In that upper right-hand corner photo is one of the pictures of a staff meeting that we have, and in the bottom right-hand corner, there is a short video. I'm going to ask you to click on that so you can watch. And I always tell the teachers after we do our data walks, now I'd like you to turnkey this to the kids, because they need to see and understand what all of this data is in our main hall. So we call it like a field trip, going on a data walk with the kids. And here is a fifth grade class interpreting the data for their class, or for the school, I should say.
Men are above grade, above grade is six.
And it warms my heart when I'm out in that hall and I see the kids, and I want to say, what are you doing here? Why are you here? And I realize they're looking at the data. It's exciting. You can go to the next one. Anchor charts is another thing that we do at Gaffney. You'll see every classroom has anchor charts in them. We have both teacher-created, and they're really pretty. We have commercial ones, but my favorite are the ones that the kids create with the teachers, because they have the buy-in when they're creating those anchor charts. So here's just a couple samples of teacher-created anchor charts, and then when the students also help create the anchor charts. And the anchor charts are up there. It's almost like when you take notes in a notebook, instead of doing that, we have these anchor charts so they can reference them in the class at any time. And then here's just a couple examples of vocabulary walls. We have both student-created vocabulary walls, which you see on the left, and we have commercially-created ones on the right. I would love for all of the classes to have student-created vocabulary words walls. Again, when you have them invested in that, they're going to know those words a lot better than if we just put something that looks pretty up on the wall. So our goal is to try to get everybody to have a student-created vocabulary wall. Thank you very much for having me.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Very good work. Mr. Maisy is going to talk to us about some of the work happening at Slade Middle School.
Good evening.
Evening.
First and foremost, thank you to the board, thank you Dr. Gaspard for allowing me, I was told five to seven minutes, which I will do my best to keep it at that, of some of the work that we're doing at Slade Middle School, because the middle schools are always looking for that notification. We want to be seen. But I'm going to be presenting to you, we are working right now on a book called Marcus Vega Speaks Spanish. It's a one-school, one-book, so the entire school is currently reading it. So I want to take you through what it is, some of the data that we found, and then we're in the middle of it right now too, and we'll go over that in a second. So go ahead, we're tapping away. All right, so when we did our survey data, we found a lot of themes around students not really being nice to one another. Students were noticing it, parents were noticing it, teachers were noticing it as well too. So the question is now what? And I've had this idea in my head to do a one-school, one-book for a very long time, and I haven't necessarily done it yet. And this time, I was finally like, you know what, we're here, we have Commissioners Network Funds, which I'll talk about how we're paying for this in a second, and it's time to go. It's time for us to be able to do this. So we decided to go ahead and do a one-school, one-book, and I'll take you through our journey. So this all started middle of January. It didn't seem like that long ago, but one of my goals was to do a one-school for everybody, oh, sorry, one-book for everybody, but also have the author come in as well too. So that was a challenge within itself. We got the author to come, we figured out the book, we figured out the author, who's actually coming in on Thursday, so we're in the middle of this project. So I can't even say it's 100% complete yet, but we're in the middle of it. So if anybody would like to come and join us, by all means, email us, he's going to be presented to our students. So we started this process on February 12th. I've had some amazing support from my administration, some of our staff members have been helping us through this, and we've mapped it out so that every single student is reading the book at the same exact time in our advisory period, which has been fantastic. So our eighth graders read it during their period, then seventh graders, and then sixth graders, and it's brought a lot of life to our school. On this slide right here, I presented this to our administrators as well too. So again, thank you Tyrone and Dr. Gaspard for letting me share this with you. But we do have everything for the staff that's ready to go. So there's, every single staff has the slideshow, the questions, the vocabulary, and it's all booked. It's a book that revolves around a middle-school age student. So we're investing, an investment of about $9,000, and that's through Commissioners Network Funds. So every single child got a book. We have books in Spanish for our students that are newcomers as well too. And after the book is complete, which is actually on Wednesday, we have one more chapter to read. So once that happens, all the students will be able to take it home as well too. Go to the next slide. So not only are we doing this work to bring community, and the themes around the book, just to kind of give you an understanding, the themes around the book are these themes of bullying, there's themes of family, there's themes of identity, and all middle-school age students are looking for that identity. They're looking for, they're looking to be seen, they're looking to connect to something, and this was our opportunity to do so. But not only are we doing this with the book, we're also been, we've also participated in an entire school with hacking school discipline. So as an entire staff, we're doing a book study. Where we have, we have an anti-bullying bike raffle, we have staff versus student activities. Last week, we had a staff versus student dodgeball game, and I'm still, my muscles are still sore from that. I'm not 25 years old anymore. What we have, we have students delivering the morning announcements on a daily basis so the students can hear each other. And speaking of that, I also have one of my staff members who's doing an awesome job of every single day when we're doing our one-school, one-book, they're giving a synopsis of the story and then like a question to have the students hone in on what's being read for that specific day. We had a March Madness attendance brackets. So we're working on addressing our chronic absenteeism rate, and we're also working on decreasing our suspensions as well too. And I'll share some of the data points that we have in a second. And then with our staff, I'm working on them with encouraging words, writing positive notes to one another. I have this mug ceremony that every single week we do like a shout-out for kind of like a staff member of the week that the staff member shares with one another, which has just been bringing community. One of my biggest goals is to just get that community back to Slade Middle School. Again, we're a middle school, 750 students, they all want to feel that they belong somewhere, and we're doing our best to pull it all together and make everybody feel, not only the students, but the staff as well too, and of course, the families, because I want everyone to feel that they belong as part of our learning community, which is very important to me. So next slide. So when I first delivered this, Tyrone came to me probably about a week into the book, and it was like, what data can you share? Well, we're about a week into this. So let me do some work. So I have some comparative data from the time that we had, and I want to compare March of '23 with March of '24. So first and foremost, in that timeframe of February 12th to March 8th, and I did comparative, you can take a look over there, we've gone down about 300 referrals from last year to this year. So that's just been huge within itself. One of our biggest issues has been skipping. We did some schedule tweaks this year, and we've included all those items that I had this year, and we went from that same exact timeframe of 212 to 38. We had 263 skips in 2023, and we went down to 92 behaviors in that timeframe. So just some really big decreases. Physical altercations and fights, which do lead to suspensions, and let me just take a step back, that when, you know, when the students are not in class, they're more active doing things that they shouldn't be doing because they're not being monitored. So our suspensions have been decreasing. But if you take a look at the physical, the fights or physical altercations, we went from 53 to 28. So again, we split it, we cut it down by about half. And then our OSS, we did go down, but not as significant as the other one, because there have been some other kind of issues that have been popping up, which are that. But one of my biggest things that I'm proud of is our chronic absenteeism rate. Our chronic absenteeism rate last year was about 39%, and right now, we're at about 31%. So all of these things that we're doing, our goal is that we're doing them to bring community into the school, to bring, you know, ownership, to bring identity, so that the students feel that they're here, they're welcome, and they have that. But then, like I said before, I did a march, and the numbers are about the same. So all of March, we cut referrals about half from last year to this year. So we've been doing an absolutely phenomenal job with cutting those in half. The more the students are in the class, the more they're learning, the more we can add the rigor, the more we can improve our scores. And one of our goals at Slade Middle School is to decrease the students that are identified as special education with reducing their suspensions. Last year, about 38% of our suspensions were of students that received, had IEPs. Right now, we're at about 17% of all of our suspensions. So we've seen a massive decrease in that too. And a big thing is our staff is working really hard together at creating this community and building that. So what are the students saying? And I printed off this, so I'm gonna, just like Anita, I can't see that far, I'll do my best to see this. But the students are really enjoying the book. They're saying it's about me. There's students that are there, so it's about an eighth-grade boy and his brother who's a sixth-grade boy with Down syndrome. And the, just the family is going to take a trip, the boy's father lives in Puerto Rico, and it's, not only is it a family trip, but it's the son wanted to go meet his dad he hasn't met in about 10 years. So it's that like conflict during the entire book. So the students are able to see themselves in there. They're able, they know, a lot of their family members are in Puerto Rico, or they're in the same type of familial situation as well too. So they're able to see themselves in it. And just last week, I don't want to, shocker, Marcus Vega finds his father. But last week, when we read it, it was really fun to kind of carry it to like, just talk to the students about it, about, oh my God, he found his father. It was just great to have that, to have that community, and it's great to be able to go around in the classrooms and observe it. So what, you know, what was the staff saying? I've had a lot of really good conversations with staff, a lot of positive feedback about this, but the general, the general idea of this is it's nice that we could use literature, it's all planned for us, you know, the students are able to access it, we're able to have that community building, and we have time built in for that. So the, you know, the staff and students are all working together at this. And as I stated before, and we have one more slide, and that's okay, but in my opinion, I don't think our data is lucky. I think we're 100% leading, and we're working in the right direction. We have a lot of really great measures in place. Our students are in their classrooms, working hard. Our staff understands that we're working to have community in our building. Once we have a community in our building, then our students are going to be able to learn and access the curriculum. So with that said, our author comes in on Thursday. I'm crossing my fingers that we're not having wet snow and gross weather, because that's what it are in the weather, and let's hope not. But if anybody would like to join us over at Slade, where he's going to be talking to each grade level, so it can be different topics during the day. So if anyone would like to join us, by all means, email us with your availability, and you know, we'd love to have you. So thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And that was a somewhat extended, but I hopefully enjoyable superintendent's report.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to committee reports, starting with curriculum.
Last meeting, we got a wonderful presentation from the folks at RELC about the creative curriculum, I believe it was called, for the preschool kids. Obviously, sort of an upgrade from what we've traditionally had, not to say that what we traditionally had was bad necessarily, but based on the presentation, what we saw in terms of the platform, and all of the pieces of the platform that looked like a much more cohesive curricular offering for the young kids, young folks, little people over at RELC.
Thank you. Policy, please.
We got our audit back, and so we're taking a look at this. We do have a number of mandated policies that are not, we don't have, I should say, 25 missing mandates, missing that are recommended, 106 policies dated since 2004 '28. So we have some work to do. We just got this this evening. So yeah, Policy Committee will be diving into that shortly and then figuring out next steps.
Thank you.
If I may, Mr. President. So on that, my recommendation for the next work of the Policy Committee would be to review the report and then identify for the superintendent your areas of focus most urgently. And then what I can do is use the, what CAPE calls their core policy manual, and I'll bring to you their kind of boilerplate suggested language from which the committee can work to customize as you see fit.
I think the mandate ones that are missing are the first ones, I personally, I'm not speaking for the whole committee, that I want to see what, which ones those are. I haven't, again, haven't digested this because we just got it. And then if there's any two that you feel you want to have addressed ASAP, that I throw in there as well, not just for us. So, yeah.
Thank you. Personnel, please.
Yes, we met, very short agenda. We got a report on extra interviews, and there are a couple other items that are on the agenda that we went over. If you want to, for the extra interview, we can pull it off of the consent, if anyone's interested in hearing more about the results of that. That's it.
Thank you. Finance and facilities.
Finance, facilities. First of all, I gotta say, I'm continue to be impressed with how fast the facilities department is closing out the construction projects. I mean, when I first came on the board, we were dealing with projects, we're like 20 years old in some cases, and now it seems like they're closing up projects that maybe... And now it seems like they're closing up projects that maybe a couple of weeks old. So I'm very impressed with that work. So I give kudos to Ms. Gonzalez and her team on that. We mainly did a lot of what I call donations, I love seeing those. We also did a lot of contract renewals. And we also did a pro, approve a process to collecting rental fees, which I was surprised that we didn't have a process in place for collecting rental fees in a proper accounting manner. So that's on the consent agenda as well.
Just, just a little more context on that. The process is in place, but we didn't have that was recommended by the auditors. Is a separate banking account in which those funds are held completely separate.
All right, thank you. Moving on to board reports. Any board reports, Ms. Antenna?
What? Look at that, I didn't even have, I'm lacking anymore. Okay.
Look on your face kind of gazing away.
I know, you gotta quit, yo, my wings are gonna get cold. Got basketball today. Here we go. This is autism, you know, this autism month, neurodiversity month. Please, everyone, just be friendly, be nice, hug all of our littles because it is just amazing and I want them to be growing up in a better, more accepting world. And we have to model that ourselves. And so for that, I thank you all for whatever you can do in our community for Autism Month. As you see in our district dispatch, we are going to be having an event on, on the 17th, I believe it is, of April. And that is in partnership with our park and rec department, so I encourage everybody to. And before we get ahead of ourselves, tomorrow is parent teacher conferences at New Britain High School. And so I'm gonna be there, but also, again, we have pathways and keys and bridges there. So I, you know, I just want to make sure that at least we're all just showing up and showing out for our kids. Also, I'm trying to keep this quick. Thank you very much, Dr. Gasper and the team over at Slay. I have heard nothing but every single chapter of this guided book, as my son CJ has been reading it. And so he is quite engaged. And keep in mind, I actually have a mini library in my house and you guys know my oldest kid is a librarian. I have lots of books. The only book, thank God he got over the hump of the underpants thing, because now he is all on this particular book that they are reading. And he's so excited that Ken and his friends are following this book and they actually discuss it during their lunch bunch with Mr. Tykoski, who was featured in last month's issue. So it is a real community effort at Slay and I can't say enough about just how proud I am as a Slay mom to be getting that feedback, having these discussions with him. And he is actually more excited than I'm pretty sure the author is about coming to Slay. So that's what I am looking forward to is the feedback from Thursday. So very much, and my son is with autism, so it is great just getting his perspective and what he thinks of the book, how he interprets it. And just for, my son goes to Puerto Rico pretty often. We're kind of upset that this guy was not from San Hin month. Okay.
Thank you. Other board reports?
I just want to say thank you to the school district for their being able to highlight Ramadan and Holi.
Yeah.
I think that was amazing and it just shows how our district is inclusive and how we can, you know, highlight these kind of celebrations. Thank you.
Thank you.
I also want to echo that too. I liked, I saw, it was a Facebook post last week, was the tips for taking care of, having as a teacher, what things to look out for to help a student going through Ramadan. And as a teacher myself, who has quite a few Muslim students, I found that extremely helpful and I wish my district had put out the same thing. So whoever wrote that up, thank you.
It's our excellent communications officer right there. Ms. Parker?
Yeah, I went to the play at New Britain High School. I won't say too much because I'm sure it's in your. Only recommendation, next time you place the seats in auditorium, make them higher.
One more reason to renovate.
We're working on that.
Any other board reports?
I just also want to say, I believe it was Read Across America Day a few weeks ago. And that was a very large effort on behalf of the district and United Way. Quite a few volunteers came out to read. I got lots of really cute requests from elementary schools and I couldn't fulfill them all. I apologize. But, so, so I just want to say thank you to all the volunteers.
Did they want you to grow something while they?
Everything, yeah.
Yeah.
It's not just reading, it's also a little performative and yeah.
Should have been on that, man.
May I have one thing for the board? I just want to say thank you to the board members who were able to attend the budget meeting with Common Council. It was very beneficial to have you there and for you to speak about how you believe in the budget.
Thank you.
Happy to be there.
All right, moving to student representatives' report with our sole student rep tonight.
Not much to change.
Yeah, hold it down.
Not only student rep, but now communications intern.
Yeah.
Yes, this is my first in-person day working along Ryan Langer. She's been so generous and kind to me over the end internship and she's hoping to make it into a full program, so more students at NVHS can experience it next year, which I really hope they do because I know a lot of students would appreciate it. So thank you. And thank you to everyone here for approving that and letting me be here more than I already am. One of the other exciting things that's happening is that the FASFA has finally been processed, which is just a great thing for students because now more scholarships can be pushed out and just more money can be given to those who really need it for higher education, which you guys all know is very important. I also attended the musical and that was really good. One of our other student representatives, Daniel, he was the lead in it. And he did amazing along with madrigals and treble choir and the rest of the ensemble. They did a really nice job as always. So I hope everyone went out to see it because it was a really good show. Also, there was just a lot happening in the month of March. In-house scholarships are due and just in memoriam of Sarah Jones, there is a scholarship in her name now, just to remember her. And our National Honor Society hosted their annual Pi Day event. All proceeds went to that scholarship and that was just really nice to see. Also now spring sports have started, so volleyball, tennis, both girls and boys, and I believe soccer and maybe flag football have been a full swing now. And baseball is also about to start for April.
Thank you.
I gotta say, I'm kind of glad to hear that you guys are having interns from the high school coming in. That's how, remember back when I was in high school, we had the mayor for a day program. And that was how, kind of how I got my start in government was, even though it was one day of the school year, coming as a high school student, coming in and seeing how government worked, that sparked an interest. So I'm glad to see you guys are opening that up. And when I first got involved in politics, I tried to bring it up and there was a lot of pushback from our next door neighbors. So I'm glad to see you guys are bringing it back on the side.
I was your next door neighbor, I didn't say anything.
No.
Oh, you're saying yours was for me.
No, the next door neighbor.
I got you.
Anything else?
I'd like to make a motion to see if we can move up the recognition of teachers and students before we do our executive session, so that we can get our young people. So they don't have to stand personal.
I second that motion.
Okay, so we have motion, we have a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. So item C, recognition of teachers and students whose artwork was exhibited in Atsugi, Japan.
Sister City.
Sister City Exhibition 2024. Do you have a motion?
So.
All those in favor?
Aye.
So we have Ms. Clerken with us tonight. Ms. Clerken, thank you for being here. Thank you for, I know it was somewhat last minute, but arranging to have some students with us tonight. So she's going to give us a brief overview of the, the partnership with our sister city in Japan and show us some of the student artwork tonight.
Thank you very much for having me this evening. I'm thrilled to continue this partnership with Atsugi. I have a letter from the superintendent, let's say, of the Board of Education. Dear Superintendent Gasper, I hope this letter finds you well. First and foremost, I would like to express my gratitude for your help in keeping our sister city relations robust. I am writing this letter to express my sincere gratitude for participating in our annual children's art exhibition by sending us wonderful artworks. As we return these artworks, we have included a small gift for the young artists, so we would be grateful if you would pass them on. I hope that you will continue to participate in this annual exhibition and support us as a fellow sister city. Yours sincerely, Yoshishika Sensoshi, Superintendent Atsugi Board of Education. It came in this adorable, this is their little piggy with the sushi hat. And inside you'll, the kids are getting these as well. And inside there are featured images of Atsugi and you can use the QR code on the back and see some of those images of Atsugi, the beautiful city. So I will pass this along first to you, superintendent.
Why don't you start with Ariana, that she can send it down. Thank you.
Thank you. Was the piggy that makes the difference, honey, clearly. Somebody here has the certificates for the school.
Yes, we do.
Would you like to call the names and then we'll show the artwork at the end? Or would you like me to, what do you think would work best?
You want to stand up here and we'll have the students join us for a photo? Ms. Langer, you're in charge of the photos, yes? Okay. Yeah, go ahead.
Presidential.
Yeah, I think you and Ms. Clerken can call the names and then we'll get a photo with the board chair and?
Yes, we have students and teachers. Hopefully, we have a few. Anthony Madero. Congratulations.
Why don't you come in front of the podium so Ms., Ms. Langer can get a nice photo of you?
There are six, six students.
With, with Mr. Listro? And Ms. Clerken, that's perfect.
The next district dispatcher, right?
Sophia Lanyar.
Ooh, that is nice. Maybe we're in a style.
Jeremiah Neyarko. And then we have a student, Khadija Algamouche. She is celebrating Ramadan, so she's not here tonight. This is her bedroom that she made. Angeles Martinez Caisa.
Angeles Martinez Caisa.
Caisa. Congratulations. And Marwa Zanta. We also have some recognitions for teachers. Julie Flynn, she's not here, from Gaffney Elementary. Tyler Morey from North End Elementary. Kim Grumilian from Jefferson Elementary. And Jenna Lombardo from Howza Academy. Thank you.
Ms. Clerken, thank you for organizing that. Thank you for being here tonight.
Thank you very much.
Students and families, you are more than welcome to stay, but the board will not be offended if you decide you have to go. Get home to do your homework, so.
President, when I, about 2001, I was secretary of the Sister City Commission and we hosted a delegation from Atsugi. I still remember the superintendent from Atsugi came and the thing he was most proud of was he wanted to create a partnership between New Britain Schools and their schools. So I'm glad to see that that partnership not only was created, but we saw the results tonight. So I'm glad for that.
Yes, moving on to, back up to item 3A. Can I have a motion to enter executive session?
Motion.
Some moves, second.
This is with, I have it. Executive session with Attorney Murphy, Dr. Sanders and Superintendent Gasper. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those motion passes. Okay, we are back for executive session. Moving on to new business. Item A, may I have a motion to approve minutes from the regular Board of Education meeting on March 5th?
Move.
Second. Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor, so if I might say an aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Moving on to item B, may I have a motion to discuss the process for developing a strategic plan for the Board of Education? Don't need a motion. Moving on, discussing the strategic plan. Thank you, Mr. Dave Erwin is back to see us again. Welcome back. Some of us, remember, we have a few new board members this time around.
Tina couldn't wait to see me. It feels like missing grandfather. It's nice to be back to see the members of the board and it's nice to meet the new board members. And just listening to your two presentations that maybe missed being a superintendent. Because that's really what it's all about, when you hear good presentations like that, starting with elementary, seeing that stuff with the real life kind of thing, with the levels of hotness. And I just read that recently and I said, wow, that's something that wasn't around when I was there. Moving into the middle school, having spent 11 years as a middle school principal myself, it was really exciting. And that one book, one community really goes a long way. And when you get middle school kids involved, they're always a little fringey, but the staff is always too, and so is the principal.
Exactly, that's true. That's true.
But it's nice to be invited back and I see Mr. Selena that I've worked with and Mary Ellen Manning that I've worked with. So it's nice to see people and of course, Tony. But I had talked to Tony a little bit and Tony approached me about you were interested in doing a plan, a strategic plan. It doesn't have to be a tome, because we know what happens with a tome. You do it, it goes on the shelf and say, I think we did that in 2024, but I, I've never done it. And a policy manual is essential and you want those essential policies because the dog-eared ones are the ones the superintendent have to look at. Or the principals, and we've got a couple of educators on the board, those are the ones, some of the ones you hate to have to look at. They're the ones that's there for your edification. But in talking to Tony, just, you have a vision of the graduate and some of the discussion we had, some of the things were empathy and cross-cultural understanding, certainly a diverse community and talking to Mary Ellen, over 10,000 students, critical and creative problem solving. Think you saw that particularly in the first president. The third, initiative and perseverance. Nothing better than that for kids. The next, analyze and construct arguments based on evidence. The more we can give students real life opportunities, I think the better off we are. And meaningful and purposeful communication. If we can't read or write, what's, that's the foundation. Look at my little kindergarten granddaughter and, you know, she, she wants to read in the worst way. She's having some trouble with some of her words and she gets really frustrated. But then in further talking with Tony, you have the four committees, the policy, curriculum, personnel, finance, facilities and transportation. There would be a way, I think in a simplistic way, to do a strategic plan based on this, the vision of the graduate, coupled with the work you do in the committees. Maybe we meet together as a group, talk about some ideas, where you see things fitting. And then we can fit anything in a box, but then you have to look. And then we can fit anything in a box, but then you have to look at the realistic way to say, how are we going to make this come to life? You don't want to set a goal of 75 million things and say, well, this is our goals and our plan and now superintendent and his cabinet has to do it all. But I think the board wants to be involved with that. So if this is something you're interested in, I would be more than happy with, to work with you. I've worked with many of you in the past. I still like the profession, I'm still trying to keep my self-busy. Mary Ellen will faint, but this is my 49th year. I know I only look 21, right?
That's right.
No, it's fun. And, you know, talking to Mr. Selena during the session before, it's good to keep busy and it's good to keep in the midst of people that are interested in education. So I could certainly elaborate on that further if you wanted to invite me to a meeting. If this comes to play, we could do it in the evenings if you wanted. If you wanted to book off a couple of Saturdays to have more devoted time where you're not worried about things. Or if you wanted to do some things midday Sunday, we could certainly do something like that. But, you know, I'll wait to, you know, see what you have to say, what you, you know, think about this. Certainly before you dive into anything, happy to get more detail in the future. Maybe the first night if this is something you want to proceed with. And I'm happy to do it and Tony knows how to reach me. And I've worked with Tony a little bit in the past. He invited me in his last district to come and observe his district data team, which I was always pretty impressed with. And I see some of the vocabulary that your second principal was using was part of the way you talked in the education. And I think it's good. So would there be any questions for me? But if not, you know, I can start in the future. I'm sure if you put something together, especially for your own goals, you want to have these in place before the start of the new school year. Because that's a roadmap for you, ultimately a roadmap for the superintendent and his staff.
Where do we start?
How does the board feel about nights or Saturdays?
Maybe a night or two once in a while, but some Saturdays may be better.
So my guess is this is one and a half days of work, I would guess, Dave?
I don't think it's going to be, but I think when everyone comes prepared to work, we're going to be in good shape.
I would say one evening and one full day, separated by some time to think in between.
Perfect, yeah, with some...
Plenty, we'll have plenty of coffee.
Tina, we'll have coffee, we'll have two coffees just for you, ready to go.
Yeah, we could, I could probably, for Saturdays, I could probably start as early as sometime in early May. Evenings before that, I still teach in the superintendent prep program at Sacred Heart. And I have two Saturday classes left for this month. So I don't want to book off for any dates that I can't commit to. So I'm done with that class at the end of April. But I certainly could do a night, one of the nights before that date, before we started the Saturday session. So I'll wait to hear from, certainly you folks, talk to Tony and whatever you'd like.
My question was actually really just more of a general one, because I know, you know, we do a full day and a half day. If we have questions afterwards, would we be able to, I'm trying to at least get it done as soon as we, as soon as our schedules allow, which would give us the opportunity as a board to tweak it, ask questions, whatever. And then can we be able to revisit, you know, come back for another couple of hours if we need to be able to tweak whatever we have questions?
I think what tends to work well in addressing, of course, we can always take questions, is probably a solid week and a half to two weeks between the sessions. Because that would give Dave and me time to compile the notes, compile the work of the first session, send it out to you.
Yeah.
So you can see it. And then when we come back, we're ready to kind of finalize. I'm in complete agreement with Mr. Erwin that I think the ideal plan is somewhere around that thick.
Yeah.
It's not a binder like this, and it's not a binder like this, because I've seen plenty of those in my career and they never come true. You guys have heard me say many times, the district growth plan has three pages. Well, that's like three pages that mean anything. There's an intro from the superintendent, there's a table, three pages. So I think we should have a small number of concepts that are important to you. This idea of organizing it around the portrait of the graduate is, I think, an excellent thing. Dave, would you recommend beginning with like a longer session? So perhaps beginning with a Saturday and then follow up with an evening?
I think that would be better, maybe bring, starting with the Saturday where we had a little bit more time to dive in. I don't want to make it so lengthy that by the end of the day we're punchy though. We wouldn't go to four o'clock or anything.
Oh, I thought you were going to say punching.
If we run out of cream, you're going to say that.
I just finished my doctoral class on making a strategic plan. And what I first said is, you start off with a brainstorming session, making all, and I think all day want to be great. Where we all hammer ideas, like what do you want to be the vision, what do you want to be the goals for? And then, once you get all those ideas in that one day session, then you can probably hammer it down to that, your little, I don't call it pamphlet, but your little three, four-page thing.
We'll have, we can have sticky notes, we can put up stuff and open up a dialogue.
Because we all, each one of us probably has 20 different ideas, what we think should be in the strategic plan, which we probably all fill it in in a big tome, so that idea, getting it down to this.
Yeah.
Tie it down in one night, one day.
Sometimes it's harder to write a poem than it is a novel.
And I think what we could use too, there's a great definition that the State Department does for consensus. Doesn't have to mean you get everything you want, but that your voice has been heard in dealing with it. I think that's important. You know, it may not be your favorite thing, but at least you've been respected, at least you've been heard. And that's hopefully something that, you know, some people are going to say, yeah, mine got on the list. Mine didn't, but at least I was heard. Mine got on the list and maybe someone else's didn't get on the list. So that's my general idea about that. And if so, I'd love to work with you and I'll wait to hear back from you.
Prepare for the meeting too, think about, again, what is it, you hear, you know, the portrait of the graduate, the vision of the graduate, whatever you want to call it. Think about exactly what is it that you want to see when our kids graduate? What is it you want, what does a New Britain High graduate look like? In order to be a functioning member, proud to say, I graduated from New Britain High School 10, 20, 30 years from now. What do you want to have done? What do you want it to need in the future? Because it's not just for the class of 2024 we're looking at, 2020, or 2025, 2026. We're talking about 2034, 2044, 2054. So that's where we're going to look at, think of that mindset, not just 2024.
And if you tie it into your committee work, that's where you can make some tangible suggestions in each of the areas.
Because all the work we do, we talk about facilities, we talk about findings, we talk about personnel. All that stuff is going to be our strategic plan, it's going to be our roadmap, our pathway for everything.
So you'll send us some reading beforehand, right?
Sure, we'll give you some information, just a little bit. And I'll wait to hear back from you. Great, thank you very much for inviting me.
Thank you, Dave.
Good to be here.
Good to see you again.
Nice to meet you.
Mr. Prokop, thank you for being a valet to Mr. Erwin. It's a lot of bad job.
Are you okay to go, Tina?
I forgot, he does look like my grandfather. That's the scary part, was like, take off your glasses.
Okay, moving on to item D. Review new job description for lead teacher for secret summer program. This was the new agenda.
So, thank you. So as described during the Personnel Committee, these are positions that we've had for a long time, that have been budgeted for a long time, but did not have a job description. So we are a little bit behind schedule because of some of our interim admin assignments. So we want to get these posted so we can have a smooth summer school experience. And we can rectify the fact that we've had some jobs that didn't have a job description.
Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Moving on to item E, enrollment report.
As has been the pattern, we remain at about approximately 2.5% over our enrollment for last year.
We, we don't need a motion to vote.
It's informational, everybody's point, yeah.
Moving on to item F, report of personnel transactions and extracurricular appointments.
You have your typical report. In this one, we do accept with a vote.
Can I have a motion to accept the report?
Second.
And are those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, motion passes. Okay, moving on to item G. May I have a motion to discuss the board policy? P 6115.3 flag display. I will start by sharing, this was one of the topics that the Policy Committee has been, has been discussing pretty frequently.
Extensively?
Yes.
Repeatedly?
Repeatedly. The policy that's before you is a policy that was a combination of three different, taken from three different places. One is the city of New Britain's procedures for raising flags across from City Hall. The other was the current language that we had drafted from previous meetings. And then the third was language that was adopted from school districts in Vermont to avoid any lawsuits that pertain to the case in Boston in which flags were argued to be a form of public speech rather than a form of government speech. The committee chair, Ms. Marino, asked for this policy to come before the full board for any farther discussion. And I will leave it at that.
Yeah, no, the purpose was to bring it to everybody now. To, like Mr. Listrow said, we've been going back and forth with different drafts and verbiage. And this was one that we wanted to bring to everyone. A couple of things here that we've discussed in committee had to do with superintendent or their designee being responsible and having all requests going to Dr. Gasper and/or his designee or to the board. And that was probably the biggest part of the conversation. During, at that point, I believe Dr. Gasper, and I know you'll correct me if I'm wrong, your indication was, should it remain with you? You would rely on the DEI policy that currently exists. And that seems to be, what's the word I'm only looking for?
Very inclusive.
Inclusive, thank you. Such that would probably mean that any request presented to you would be honored.
Unless it contravened the last bullet here. If I deemed it to be inappropriate, offensive, or discriminatory, you'd be right.
So we've had, we had a bunch of comments and discussion, but now wanting to bring it to the rest of the group for their thoughts and input as well. It's, you know, it's not something where, oh my God, we're going to do this today. I'm sure there'd be some back and forth a little bit here, obviously. But I wanted to get everyone else's input at this point.
I guess I like this proposal, as I look over it's up there than some of the ones that's come forward. I like the fact that it does give, it kind of lays it out, like what flags would be considered, that it must be written, it does say, there is a waiting period almost, where you just can't say, oh, I won't put the flag up tomorrow, it must be three weeks, because it's tense to review it, up to consideration. One thing I kind of would like to see is, I also want to see a part in there about when the flag comes down. Because there were times I've gone by, driven by New Britain High, and I'll see the same flag up there for weeks.
For the entire summer?
Over the entire summer, and there were times I've driven by there and I'll see that flag up, but not the American flag or the Connecticut flag. For the entire summer. So I'd like to see a line in there, like the flag will come down after a certain period of time.
Yeah, I believe the third, there was discussion within the third bullet to put some other, it says proposed timeframe for raising and flying the flag. I took that to be the period of start and end time. So hopefully that does incorporate. In other words, whoever makes the request has to provide us with some information about it, including...
Yeah, and it's also honor too that, you know, whoever's put the flag up that day is told, okay, yeah. The flag, the Rivera, the Rivera Association flag will be up from June 4th to June 14th. And the custodians, whoever puts the flags up that day, June 14th, June 15th is, okay, I'm not putting the Rivera Association flag up.
Isn't that the ROTC that...
Yeah, whoever, whoever the people, whoever put the flags up that day.
Maybe that's why in the summer it's still up, because there's no school, so someone needs to be responsible.
And as I said, I'll drive by and I'll see that flag up, but I won't see the American flag up.
We'll let you be in charge a little across the street, right?
I, and I, let me just say, we know why that occurred and we've addressed it.
Yeah.
Mr. Gay?
I think in terms of treating everyone equally and equitably, I think having a given timeline by us, not like, so one group might say, I want it up, we want it up for a week. And another group might say, well, I want it up for a day. I think it's just equitable to say, okay, this is the amount of time, whatever it is, a day, two days, a week, whatever it happens to be. So we're treating every group that approaches, every group of students that requests equally and equitably. The other, the other concern that I have is that, the last bullet point, inappropriate, offensive, discriminatory, it's that, those are words that are in the eyes of the beholder. What's offensive or discriminatory to one person is not to another person. And this is where I feel like we're kind of, you know, kicking the bucket down the road and saying, okay, let Dr. Gasper decide. He wasn't elected, we were elected. Yes, I understand, you know, we are a political body. We do have to make decisions that are political and that are unpopular. But I feel like this is something that if a request comes before, comes to Dr. Gasper, I feel that this board should be the ones saying yes, or saying, you know what? This would be disruptive to our school environment. You know, we think it's inappropriate and offensive and, you know, we decline to fly it. Rather than letting him take the heat for something that, you know, we crafted the D I I policy and we're giving it to him to implement and now he's the one who has to say, oh, do I not?
Maybe add an appeal process on there.
That's what he get paid for, why wouldn't he? To make you talk to him, right, I don't want to make him.
Why'd you run?
Because I want a voice, but you don't, I'm not saying you have to do everything I say.
I do want to, I'll jump in and just say, crafting the policy, I did want to shield it a lot from the political heated rhetoric that's going on. So one of the ways of doing that would be to grant the superintendent with that privilege. But I think that building in the language that the request has to come from a school should mean that there should not be inappropriate, offensive, or discriminatory flags at our schools. Because if that's the case, then we have much larger problems than who's deciding what flags are to be flown. So that was kind of my thinking behind the language in the policy. But I definitely see both sides of the argument there.
I do have a question, because I know for the celebrations, right? The students are the ones that request. Is it the same thing with the flag raising? Would the student be the ones that are requesting to fly, set flags? And I agree with Tony in the fact that the gray areas, we have to, I think we should make it, as far as the timeframe, from this day to this day or a week, whatever, because, you know, you don't want that to become an issue later on. You know, the gray areas, I don't like. I like it black and white.
Yes, yes, so I believe the request would come from a student group or a school group associated with, or staff, students or staff. And they would have to outline that in their request.
Now, we've been, kind of tired of hearing, we're discussing this, discussing this. We've discussed this almost since the day I got elected. And I'm getting tired of hearing it as being a discussion item. When is it going to become an action item?
I think we're getting there.
I mean, I'm not, I mean...
That's why we wanted to bring it here now.
Yeah, I mean, I like... Yeah, I mean, I'd like, I'd like to say.
So the motion was to discuss, but it's listed on the agenda as a, as an approval. You can certainly motion, you can certainly make a motion to approve it this evening.
Well, can we just?
Or as amended.
Approve it with a timeframe being added?
We could make, we could amend it. My, my thought and what I've heard from others in the community is that it should be reviewed by, because there's a DEI component to this, it should be reviewed by DEI before we take a final action on that.
And Dr. Sanders, we have a DEI meeting the Tuesday after vacation, I believe.
So it could, there could be a motion to just refer it to DEI committee.
All right, then I move to refer it to DEI Committee. And then referral back to the next board meeting, which is in May, the May Board Meeting for Action.
So just as a matter of protocol, a reminder that the DEI is the Superintendent's DEI Advisory Committee. It's not a subcommittee of this board.
Of this board.
But we will be happy to take it there and bring to you their feedback.
Their feedback, yes, thank you.
So, well, did you make the motion?
I made a motion.
All right, so we need a second to continue the discussion.
Actually, I don't think you have an action item right now.
No?
If, if the next move is for it to be retained by the Superintendent's DEI Committee, I will do so.
Then the motion can be tabled.
Will we, will we add a timeframe though?
Well, it's going to come back to you.
It'll come back to us.
Okay.
Okay, but the Superintendent's DEI Committee may not make such a recommendation to you.
Right.
Yeah.
So that, that'll still, and when we created that advisory committee, we were specific that they do not have veto rights over the board or over the superintendent. Right, their job is to look at
Advising.
any particular issue from a wide variety of perspectives. And then what we've done before is basically, Dr. Sanders and I bring to you a summary of their feedback.
Is the next Policy Committee meeting is after the DEI Committee? So we could motion to refer it back to Policy? And then here, is that correct?
I'm checking the calendar now.
Yes, it should be the after.
Here's my question though. So if I, if I'm hearing Dr. Gasper correctly, they have their meeting, then they digest it, give the feeding, kind of package it up, bring it back to us for the next board meeting. Will the three days they're going to have in between really be enough for us to, be enough for them to process, ask questions, and then bring it back to us in Policy?
So you're meeting the Tuesday after vacation?
The sixteenth.
The next policy, and the policy is the twenty-second.
So again, they're, they're not a body that's going to debate, they're not a body that's going to say this is.
There's no feedback.
Right, so, so we, we created that so we have a wide variety of faiths, of cultures, of ages sometimes to say, oh, I'm thinking about this issue from this particular angle that perhaps the superintendent under the board didn't think about. And then we can carry that to you and say, oh, here, here's, here's a way of thinking that we hadn't yet thought of. So I think a single meeting is probably sufficient for this, Dr. Sanders?
Yes, sir.
And then we can, Dr. Sanders and I can type up a summary for you. We, you know, we don't ask them for their recommendations, we ask them for their input and their perspective.
And then that comes back to Policy, or that's going to come back to the board?
That's a decision here.
I would recommend it goes to Policy, we could amend the language in Policy and then put it on the May's agenda.
Just like I said, I'd like especially to see some action, because we've been debating this now for almost two and a half years, so.
We've been debating it since before, don't you worry.
I know, but I've been on the board now for two and a half years, so.
We're getting there. We're getting there. We're moving.
We, we have to have something that people can agree to.
I mean, Betsy Ross is cynical, couldn't agree better.
Well, there's no sense in bringing a policy forward that's going to deadlock at five, five, it'd be something that the majority of the board can accept.
Right, and agree to.
So we've been talking about it in Policy for a while.
Be motion to approve of Policy.
Right, so, you already have a motion out here?
I withdraw my motion to, but as long as it was.
I think because it's listed from a matter of procedure, because it's listed as an approval item on the board's public agenda tonight, I think the proper thing for the board to do would be to table it and refer it back to the policy.
Second.
And refer it back to the Policy Committee.
Refer it back to Policy.
And we have a second. Yes, okay, so the motion was to table and refer it to Policy?
Pending, whatever you want to say.
DEI.
Pending review by the, yeah.
Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes, thank you. All right, item H, motion to approve the exit survey data.
Several.
Give a second.
Second.
Questions?
Any questions?
Oh, quick question. These are only the people that took the survey?
Yes.
Okay, but there could be people who resigned that we didn't get survey results for?
No.
Okay.
Because every, I'm sorry, everyone is required to do an exit survey because that just helps us with that.
Right.
So if they don't do, they don't put, you know, we'll say, no, we prefer this and we send them.
It's integrated into the resignation process.
Okay, all right, I just, a clarification of, did we have more bodies than this? Did somebody?
I think if there are, there would be very, very few. Only those who just outright refuse, but I know you're pretty persistent about getting that data, Dr. Sanders.
No, she is. Thank you, sorry.
Gentle persistence, just a strong recommendation.
Anything else? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes. Item I, may I have a motion for, to approve the implementation of healthy food option and food and beverage exemption? Consideration one.
Second.
I believe this is. Oh, yes. I should, I should have remembered this from last year.
My kid's candy corn, there you go.
I, I can read it for you if you.
Yeah, I'm a little confused on this one here.
I can do that service for the, for the president.
Yeah.
So this is boilerplate compliance stuff, we're required to read the full statement. This is under board item I. Consideration one, healthy food option pursuant, pursuant to CGS Section ten dash two fifteen F. Consolidated School District of New Britain certifies that all food items offered for sale to students in the schools under its jurisdiction and not exempted from the Connecticut Nutrition Standards published by the Connecticut State Department of Education will comply with the Connecticut Nutrition Standards during the period of July one, two thousand twenty-four through June thirty, two thousand twenty-five. This certification shall include all food offered for sale to students separately from reimbursable meals at all times from all sources, including but not limited to school stores, vending machines, school cafeterias, culinary programs, and any fundraising activities on school premises sponsored by the school or non-school organizations in groups. Is that, is that in full compliance?
She's happy, you know, yes.
Was my inflection, was my inflection, compliance with the expectations?
Basically, the Michelle Obama rules that all food during school hours are healthy, right?
Similar, but I believe this is a requirement to maintain the free lunch program.
Yes.
So we, we have another similar motion coming up, but we would appreciate.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Item J, may I have a motion to approve the implementation of healthy food option and food and beverage exemption? Consideration two.
And that has to be read?
If you have a sec, if there's a second, then I'll read it.
Second.
Consideration two, exemption for food and beverage items. The Consolidated School District of New Britain will allow the sale to students of food items that do not meet Connecticut Nutrition Standards and beverages not listed in Section ten dash twenty, two twenty-one Q of the Connecticut General Statutes, provided that the following conditions are met. The sale is in connection with an event occurring after the end of the regular school day or on the weekend. The sale is at the location of the event, and the food and beverage items are not sold from a vending machine or a school store. An event is an occurrence that involves more than just a regularly scheduled practice, meaning extracurricular activity. For example, soccer games, school plays, and your scholastic debates are events, but soccer, soccer practices, play rehearsals, and debate team meetings are not. The regular school day is the period from midnight before, from the midnight before to thirty minutes after the end of the official school day. And it tells some kids they have to come to school at midnight. Location, location means where the event is being held and must be the same place as the food and beverage sales.
All those, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions?
This has to be done annually?
Annually, yes.
All righty, okay.
Motion passes. We do have one walk-in item, I need one, I need a motion to accept a grant from the Connecticut Department of Agriculture.
And a motion to add an agenda item first, please.
Thank you, motion to add, add, I can say that.
Agenda.
Agenda item K. K.
I think we're on K. And then you would list the, the, a grant acceptance.
It's a grant acceptance from Connecticut Department of Agriculture for the Connecticut Grown for Connecticut Kids program.
Some move.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Another motion to approve.
All right, motion to approve a grant acceptance from the Connecticut Department of Agriculture for the Connecticut Grown for Connecticut Kids Grant for fifty thousand dollars.
Mr.?
Yes.
Mr. Chair, great, seeing has how, point of worth, seeing as how Roots is a beneficiary, I strongly urge publicly that you turn the chair over to Vice President.
Sure. I think we need a second and a motion and a second for that, for the item that I just read though. Just procedurally, how, how would that work?
Well, I think at this point, as soon as, I, I was added to the agenda for consideration, I think you would need to turn it over at that point.
Okay, before the motion to approve. Before the motion to approve.
Yes.
Oh, thanks, appreciate that. Okay, so, looking for a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, discussion.
I will just share, since everyone's looking at me on this one. This is a grant program started just two years ago from the Department of Agriculture. I was involved in creating it, and it's distributed over two million to different public schools throughout Connecticut for the purposes of purchasing locally grown food in school cafeterias as well as school gardens, greenhouses, and providing curriculum resources for teachers in the schools. I'm very pleased that the school district received a grant this year for their SEAM program. And in transparency, New Britain Roots is a beneficiary through participating in a summer program, the SEAM program, which the grant would help support partially. And the remaining funds will be used for things such as vermicomposting, that's composting using worms. There is Growlights for teachers and staff to, in the SEAM program, to start their own plants in the spring. A few other things, I see Ms. Wright in the back, who worked very hard on receiving this grant. And I do plan to abstain from this vote.
And I would just add that we appreciate the board's indulgence. You know, we have a, tried to have a very, very limited number of added agenda items. Ms. Wright received this just Thursday.
Thursday?
And they need our approval by two days from now. So that's the reason we're asking that it be added to the agenda tour.
I'll also add one last thing, I'm not, I don't personally benefit from this grant. All the funds do go to pay educators in our nonprofit.
I do support wholeheartedly anything that gets inner-city kids to experience farming, it feels a skill. Even if they don't, you know, grow themselves, they're, they're watching it, they're developing it, I think it's a great program. So I do support this grant.
And thank you, Tony, for all the work that you do in this right, making sure this happens.
So I think you have a motion and a second. Ms. Asia, we had a motion and a second for that, I believe?
We have a motion and a second and a discussion, we're in the, in discussion.
Okay, did I move to accept, did I move to accept it?
Thank you.
We had a motion already.
I thought we did, but that's okay, now we're covering our bases, Mr. Kane, Mr. Kane and Ms. Reyes.
Right, we already had the motion and the second, it was discussion.
Yeah.
It happened fast.
Any, any other discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? You're abstaining.
Yes.
No part of it, I'm going to abstain as well. So then we're all good? Back to you.
Thank you. All right, we are on to our consent agenda. Does anyone want to pull anything from the consent? Okay, and all those in favor of passing the consent agenda signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Consent agenda passes? Is there any other business as permitted by law? May I have a motion to adjourn?
Some move, second.
Thank you, everyone.